In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made by the posting on the bulletin board in the municipal building, the township website, electronically transmitted to the officially designated newspapers, indicating that this work session, regular meeting, would take place in the municipal building, council chambers at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, March 14, 2023.
Thank you. We have members of the Girl Scouts to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. You could remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Charles Onijaka.
Oh God, the Creator and the Redeemer of all the faithful, hear our supplications, and through thy infinite love, mercy, gracious slay grants us strength, power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Barison.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois.
Here.
Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Councilwoman Onijaka.
Yeah.
Councilmember Batasnik.
President.
Councilwoman Pruitt. Councilwoman Udine.
Here.
Councilwoman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
Well, it's now time for proclamations and commendations. And is there anyone from the Girl Scouts here to receive? If we could have all the Girl Scouts come up. This is the kind of thing Carl Wright excels at. I have to channel my Carl Wright. Well, guess what, folks? It's Girl Scout Week. Can you tell? Let me just start with heading this off. I won't read. There's obviously a lot of proclamations. I'm not going to read through all of them. Girl Scout Week is celebrated each year during the month of March, starting with Girl Scouts Sunday and ending with Girl Scouts Sabbath on Saturday, and always includes the Girl Scout Birthday, March 12th, which commemorates the day the organization was founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Law in Savannah, Georgia. And therefore, the mayor and township council do hereby applaud the commitment of Girl Scouts has made to support the leadership development of American Girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 12th through the 18th, 2023, as Girl Scout Week. But we have more than that. Everybody knows what the Eagle Badge is in Boy Scouts. But sadly, and I have sponsored a girl for the Gold Award in Girl Scouts, people don't know about the Girl Scout Awards as well. What we have tonight is several Girl Scouts getting awards. First is the Bronze Award. And we have the Bronze Award for several different teams. We have a Bronze Award for the Animal Adoption Project. Who here was on the Animal Adoption Project? Why don't you guys come up here? Where's your scout leader? You can't, you don't get away with it. You've got to come up here. So here are the proclamations, and I want one of you to come up and describe what the Animal Adoption Project was. Come on up here to the mic. Come on. Come on, everyone applaud.
So the first thing that we did was we made posters and we like put barcodes on them, and like I drew cute little pictures of like dogs and cats so that we can get them adopted because these poor animals, they might die in the street like if they're left alone or they get out the house on accident. So we need them to be found and adopted so that they can be safe, cuddling with you in a cozy home. Anyway, then we also made little toys, like we put catnip in little felt pieces and we wrapped them up. And then we also made like dog toys, using rope, and then we like tied around and then we like burned it. We're like DIY cat toys and toys, and then we sent them to the shelter. That's pretty much what we did.
Thank you. That's terrific. I'm an animal lover myself, and I appreciate that you did that. Okay, Bronze Award 60675, the Bee Project. Who was on the Bee Project? One of you got to talk. You're closest, you win.
So we wanted to help the bees by planting a pollination garden. And we also like put posters and like tried to spread the awareness to help the bees. And that's it.
Did it work? Did you help the bees? That's great. Here are the proclamations for that. Bronze Award Troop 63202, Animal Shelter Donation Project. Whoa. It's a big project. Which one of you is the bravest?
So for our project, we did the animal shelter donations. So where we have our meeting, St. Matthias, we did a drive there. So we gathered as many donations as we can. So that's including like cleaning supplies, paper towels, old sheets that we can give to the animal shelter. We had a lot of donations, and we helped the local shelter, the Franklin Township Animal Shelter, to help with their cleaning supplies. So, yeah.
Take those and pass them out. Okay. Now we're going up to the Silver Award. And the Silver Award is the highest award a Girl Scout cadet can earn, and the second highest award in Girl scouting. Girl Scout Cadets in the sixth, seventh, or eighth grades have to complete a journey, conceptualization, plan, and execute a sustainable project either independently or with a team. And we have Shannon and Stasha. So why don't both of you explain what you did?
So Shannon and I and one other girl that moved out of state, so sadly she can't be here with us. We decided to make a litter boxing for the Girl Scout Camp Oak Springs. And so we had to research what litter boxing was, and we had to go out, buy the materials, fundraise for the money to buy the materials, and then sit and put all this stuff together. Overall, I think it was really fun, and we enjoyed everything that we did.
I enjoyed it. We like had a lot of fun going around and fixing some, another troop did it before us, and it was all worn down. So we had a lot of time like fixing it and stuff. And I think we made it better and more enjoyable for hikers and people that want to just like go out and have fun in nature.
And one Gold Award. The Gold Award is the highest award a Girl Scout can earn. It is, again, I hate to have to say it this way, but it's just, it's as high as an Eagle Scout. I wish it was known better so that we could say that being an Eagle Scout is as good as being a Gold, getting the Gold Award. And this goes to a familiar name. Molly House.
Okay, so for my project, I wanted to get more girls out hiking. So me and my team made a hiking guidebook with 53 hikes and hiking information. And it was distributed to seven outdoor stores, clubs, organizations. I also led two hikes, and girls that came to the hikes got my hiking guidebook. Hiking Adventures, Hiking Adventure Guide for Girls by Girls.
As I remember, didn't you have a sister that got a Gold Award? Hello? Do you have anything to say?
I'm really proud of her.
So that's terrific. All right. Who here, in a couple more years, maybe five years, wants to be on council? You're smarter than all of us. Thank you very much. Not quite the flair of Councilman Wright, but I'm learning. The next item is the Women's History Month. Councilwoman Kimberly-François.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out in the storm. We appreciate you being here. How fitting is it to have a proclamation about Women's History Month when we had these lovely young ladies here tonight, the Girl Scouts? So I'm going to read some of this, but not all of it. Whereas in honor of Women's History Month, we celebrate all of the achievements and contributions that women have made. Over the course of history of our nation, women have played a critical, crucial role in advancing social justice, led groundbreaking scientific discoveries, enriched our culture with remarkable works of art and literature, and charted bold directions in our foreign policy. Whereas the National Women's History Alliance, which creates and promotes National Women's History Month each March, has announced celebrating women who tell our stories as the 2023 theme. And whereas this month, we are encouraged to recognize women, past and present, who have been active in all forms of media and storytelling. I think I'm going to read all of it. Throughout their careers and lives, women from every part of society have devoted their lives and talents to producing art and news, pursuing truth, and reflecting the values of our society. And whereas the Women's History is in resilience, and women went from being denied their right to vote or hold public office until early 1900s, to our country's first female vice president being elected to the office in 2020. And whereas women of the United States have stories to tell about their scientific contributions to the early space program, the modernization of computer programming, the development of a vaccine to combat the COVID-19 virus, and serving in positions of power in boardrooms, the education system, medicine, politics, and the military. This month, we honor women. We honor the young ladies that were here, the Girl Scouts. We honor all women from the United States, all over the world, and for being the foundation upon not only what this nation has been built upon, but all nations have been built upon. Now, therefore, by the mayor and council in the township of Franklin, Somerset County, New Jersey, I, Councilwoman Kimberly-François, do hereby proclaim March as Women's History Month. Thank you very much.
Okay, so have the motions open for public session. So move.
Second.
Move in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion is carried, and we're open for public session. I'm going to call Rich Seaman up to go first because he has a very important message.
And I'm not going to throw that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate and appreciate the time of council tonight to give me a few minutes. Richard Seaman, 18 Luke Lane, Somerset. Tonight, I'm here to talk about Empty Bowls, but before I do, I just want to say one thank you to council. Back in January, council appointed me to the Advisory Recreation Committee here in town, and I do greatly appreciate that. As you all know, I was on the Board of Ed for over 10 years and stopped doing that a few years ago and felt like it was time to get involved again. So again, I'm thankful for it. I've been to three meetings, and I look forward to continuing to work with the children of Franklin Township. So now why I'm here. In 11 days, the Fifth Annual Empty Bowls of Franklin fundraiser will be held on Sunday, March 26th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM at the Doubletree Hotel and Conference Center, 200 Atrium Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. All are invited to participate. Those who purchase tickets will be entitled to a complimentary handcrafted ceramic bowl, very similar to this one, a tasting of bowl-worthy foods donated by local restaurants and businesses, and can shop an extensive selection of both functional and artistic pieces of pottery, fabric crafts, and artwork. Tickets can be purchased online. There's a Facebook page and also at the Franklin Food Bank website. Also, I left here on the table for anyone in the room, a card, laminated card with a QR code thing on it. So I'll just leave it here. Anybody wants to come over, you can just hit the QR code and get all this information as well. Again, at this time, with the official end of the pandemic, SNAP benefits are being dramatically reduced. The viability of the Franklin Food Bank is key to the sustenance of numerous families in Franklin Township and in our surrounding community. Empty Bowls is a grassroots effort to raise both money and awareness in the fight to end hunger, personalized by artists and art organizations on a community level. My wife, Susan, is extremely dedicated to this, and you know, this and carrying a lot of boxes is all I do for it. But I'm happy to participate, and it's a wonderful opportunity for the folks in our township to come together and support the food bank, which does such wonderful work. And you know, unfortunately, it seems like every year, the amount of work they have to do gets higher and higher and higher. But again, I appreciate the time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, folks, and look forward to seeing folks at the Doubletree on Sunday, March 26th for the Empty Bowls fundraiser. Thank you. It's from 1:00 to 4:00.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? It will be five minutes. May only come up once, no yielding of time. State your name and address.
My name is Carol Peterson. I live at 12 Lake Avenue. I'm here tonight because I have been researching marijuana. I asked this council a few weeks ago, would they have a plant-growing factory and production factory across from their house? Everybody up here saying, said no. I already know that there's been a man approved to move into this area, lives up northern New Jersey, to start working at 220 Churchill Avenue. I've also had pulled up, and I've been out by this plant that's out on 22 in Branchburg. It moved into a closed Walmart. The neighbors now, over 1,500 yards away, are trying to get it closed down because the odor of marijuana, as it's being grown and then produced, smells like dead skunks or rotting sewage, or a combination thereof. My husband researched how far we are from 220 Churchill, just like with Molekewire, the company that was here a few years ago, from 2002 to 2006. What people forget is the westerly winds and northwesterly winds, and sometimes southwesterly winds, will carry the odor farther than 1,500 yards. I have problems understanding why. For him to dispense it from that is different than from him growing and producing. You have the food bank on one side. I can only imagine what it's going to smell like. You have a dialysis center on the other. You have a new strip mall that's on Veronica, plus the other businesses, Tabacnic, that has been here for years. I want to know, did this township ever consider what kind of odor problem was going to be produced having a growing plant there? Maybe you can tell this man he could sell it from there, but I think he needs to find, and you need to help him find another place to grow it with more space around him. Please give it consideration, because as I understand from everything my husband's pulled up, it's been approved. And I just live in an area where they just sold five houses for almost $400,000 or more, and I don't think those new neighbors are going to be happy at all. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Debbie Stewart, 2 Farrington Plaza. I had some things a friend gave me to say, but I'm not going to say that because I was so impacted by those lovely young women up here. And I'm going to cry, but the thing that was so important to them was nature, the bees, the hiking, the trees, and I'm just so upset that we're destroying this town. I can't talk, sorry. You know, the corner of Metlers and Schoolhouse, and that beautiful tree farm, and the scenic corridor, and it's not about the spoiled people at Canal Walk or anything like that. It's about these kids and their future, and what Franklin Township is and should be. And I want you to think about that whenever you make a decision. Sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, Council of Franklin Township. I am here in concern of...
Name and address, please. Name and address. You have to give your name and address, and excuse me for saying this, I'm old and I can't tell the difference. If you're under 18, you don't have to give your last name or address.
I am under 18, but I will say my first name and the address. Anna and I also live at 12 Lake Avenue with my grandparents. I'm here in concern of the marijuana plant. I'm here in concern for the health of the people of the township, the children and others. What I would like to bring up, I could bring up a whole sentence here. I have a whole paragraph, but I will ask one simple question for everyone on this council board. We are taught in school, dare, which is to say no to drugs and alcohol and all of that. Why, if we are taught, then is there going to be a marijuana plant put up? Because that can, that can, that can cause health damage. Thank you for your time. I hope you have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Kramer, council members. My name is Mark Maris. I live at 179 Wilson Road, Somerset, New Jersey. I've been here for 21 years. I'm here tonight in support of an organization called the Cedar Brook Day Camp. It provides a very needed educational and activity-based program for youth of our community. Somewhere over 250 students attend that day camp over the past few years. It's been in existence since 2017. Recently, it's come under fire from an individual in the neighborhood with regards to a noise complaint. It subsequently was forced into applying for a youth variance where it resides at the Cedar Hill Prep on Cedar Grove Avenue. The design of that school is a private school. Its utilization period is nine months of the year. For the additional three months of the summer months, the Cedar Brook Day Camp has been utilizing the facility to help educate the students, provide activities in art and athletic activities, providing necessary daycare for some of the working-class members of our community. Recent voting by the zoning board for a provisional use variance was denied by a vote of four to three in favor of the day camp, where my understanding is for the Class D use variance requires a vote of five. The demeanor of the board was less than appreciative of all of the information that was presented to it through experts, including members of the council, the TRC report regarding traffic control, the parents that were there to express their appreciation for the program and how it helps the individuals that attend that session. What I'd like the council to be aware of is that I believe that the zoning board may have acted outside of its... I believe that the zoning board may have acted outside of its, uh, area of authority in denying the use variance because of the nature of the educational facility that the Cedar Brook Day Camp employs. It has a full staff that is in full regard for safety of the children. It has demonstrated an ability to be a very safe environment completely through the pandemic, in which not a single case of COVID emerged from that day camp facility. And as far as the traffic is concerned, it's no different than any other day during the regular school year with regards to pickup and delivery of the students that attend that location. I would like this council to work to support this type of activity in our community and see that the needs of the many children that are serviced by this organization be supported in a means that will consistently bring this type of program into Franklin Township. I employ you, implore you as council members to take this under consideration and approve not only use of this school setting that would be idle for three months for this particular type of activity, but extend to it beyond the use variance, some permanence, being able to utilize this facility for the benefit of our citizens and the community at large. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Sydney Wolf, 3 Gene Road. I'm also here in support of the camp and that they have been operating, I'm, I'm part of the Cedar Hill Club, the pool that is next door. They use our parking lot. Uh, we have an agreement with them, uh, to park additional cars and come in and out, dropping children off and then picking them up. We've had no issues there. We also get along very well with the school there. Um, and they've been operating for many, many years. The camp also uses our pool facilities, basketballs, softball field. They use the facility there in the morning. Um, so I would like them to be reconsidered for this additional zoning for our camp, because we also do not have many camps in this town. I believe just a school and the other off of 27. Um, but like I said, we are the, the pool club there, and we have had no real issues with the camp operating, and we have a very good relationship with them. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point something out with regards to the, the last two speakers. The zoning board is an independent body, and they hear use variance or variance applications that are devariances. Um, that's not something that the council can't tell the zoning board what to do or what not to do, is, is in the first instance. The second thing is that I've listened to what was said here today, and that's not really the basis. If, if people came and said, these are good people and, and they should get a variance, that's not the standard of, of proof that it's necessary to get a use variance. And I don't know anything about the application at all. And I don't even know whether it was really a use variance or whether they appealed the decision of the zoning-
There was in fact a use variance.
It was in fact a use variance. So if it was a use variance, then the zoning officer determined it was a non-conform, it was a non-permitted use, and they were told they had to go to the zoning board. So that certainly, hearing those applications is certainly completely within the zoning board's, um, authority. But I just wanted to make sure that we understand that while the, whatever's happening there may be laudable, it doesn't necessarily mean that that meets the standards that are required to be met to get a use variance approved. And, and I, I guess the zoning board must have been listening because they were, they didn't get a majority vote. And typically what happens when there's not a full board and there's a use variance application is that the applicant is given the opportunity to wait until there is a full board.
Now, there was a full board. There were seven, it's a seven-member board, so you need five votes.
There were not-
There were seven votes.
Or it's not a nine-member board?
It's a nine-member board. There was, there was-
They require, it's a nine-member board, Mayor, and they require five votes.
They require five votes, correct.
So it's not a seven-member board?
It's, it's not-
So typically, yeah, so it was a four to three vote?
There was-
Okay.
Right. So, and what I, and to finish what I was saying is typically what happens when you have less than a full board, because you need five votes. If there were six people there, you still needed five votes. So you always need five votes to get a use variance. Typically, the applicants are given the opportunity to come back at a time when there is a full board, because you know you need five votes. And obviously, if you have seven, then you need five out of seven. If you have six, you need five out of six. Um, that's typically what happens. So I don't, I don't know what happened in this circumstance, and I know nothing about this application, but I just want to, I just want, you know, to put this all in context, that coming here to the council and saying, we really should be granted our use variance, this is not something that have a role that we-
Go ahead.
Well, hello, everybody. I'm not very sure of, of like the use variance and so on, but, uh, I'm just here. Uh, my name is Ruthika Vatapalli. I live in 157 McNair Court, and I am here just to, you know, give you an understanding that this camp, um, that I currently have an internship at is a very good place for, uh, campers and children, um, ages, uh, you know, three all the way until 13, I believe, to be a part of. Um, and I would just like to give you a brief understanding of what it is like and what it means to me personally. Um, so, well, to keep it very crisp and concise, I've been working here for about three years now, and simply put, this camp is kind of considered to be like the happiest place in town when it's in season or when it's not in season as well. Our campers are very excited to come back and, uh, be a part of our, um, you know, camp all the time, and even more so the people who work with us, uh, including myself, my colleagues, et cetera. So, um, yeah, I hope, uh, you know, this council serves it justice, and hopefully the camp keeps running as it normally does. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Nan Benin. I'm the applicant, Cedar Hill Holdings. And I just want to share with you to make sure that we clarify some of these issues. We purchased that property to do good for the community. In 2007, we opened our first building, and we operated a camp then, under Cedar Hill Prep. We called it Cedar Hill Camp. The activities that were done by Cedar Hill Camp are no different than the activities done by Cedar Brook Day Camp. Mr. Sealy, the principal of the school, and I ran the camp. And at one point, I started my PhD work, and I just didn't have the time or the energy to pursue camp. And at that time, Galen was kind enough to come forward and say, I can do it for you. And that's what it is. We could, if you look at permitted use, we can run a camp if it's under the school. And he was just doing that for us. However, we were approached by someone in the zoning board saying, look, unfortunately for us, we happen to be, our property is right in front of some key members of the planning and zoning board, who come to the property and tell me how I should run my school. And that, I think, should not be the domain. At least, I feel I have done nothing to harm the community in any way. You know the laurels of our kids. We're a national blue ribbon school. Our kids are national award winners. We have only brought laurels to this town. Never asked to be acknowledged for that, nor have we been acknowledged. But what I would like to bring forth now is, in such cases, one time, they came forward and said, Nan, you, why don't you just apply for a devariance? Then you don't have to deal with all this that someone is coming forth with, because then you don't have to deal with it. That was the only reason we went in front of the board to ask for a devariance. But now that devariance has turned out to be something totally different. We have, if you look at my bills, we've spent close to $100,000 on this variance. For what? To give the same service we give the town? Look at how affordable CBDC is compared to the next camp, which is $11,000. It's for the community. We have worked with the TRC. They said, okay, Nan. Somebody said, there's two members across the street who bring everything. There are many other people on Cedar Grove Lane. Not one of them has complained about us. Their kids attend our camp and our school. I have never come forth before, you guys. It's going to be 20 years since I've had the school, but I felt it was time you, we had a voice too. And my voice was not squashed. I have done nothing wrong. And please watch the video. If we were addressed as, these people are sneaky and smart. These people, what am I? I'm an upstanding citizen. My husband and I have invested in this community. We are not about living decadent. This country has been great for the two of us. My husband has a PhD from MIT. I'm finishing it at Hopkins. We wanted to give this town, but now we are looked at as bad people? Tell me, go look in the documents. What have we done wrong? But to now make us feel like we don't belong here, my ethnicity is a problem? It's wrong, guys. So I'm telling you, dig deeper. Look at why you asked me to do a devariance when I did need to do it. So now they tell me, oh, Nan, you know you can still run it, but the point is, right has to be right. And I implore upon you, please, look at this deeper. Come to me and tell me what I'm doing wrong, and I'll correct it. But when you start a school with your own sweat, we don't have an endowment. It's our money. It's to do good for this town, when we've only done good. So please, some of you have had your kids in our school too. So please, look at our, you know, we have validated ourselves. Together, we're delivering to this town an affordable alternative. And I think someone needs to advocate for us. Thank you.
You gotta speak into the mic.
Okay, sorry. All right. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Galen Smith. I'm actually the executive director of the camp. Um, um, we're here today. We know that this is not in your jurisdiction. However, um, we wanted to make sure that you were aware of what was going on. Um, we've been operating the camp for CHP for now seven years, and she's been there for six years prior to that, so that's 13 years. And I just want to, um, as passionate as she was, I got a little choked up due to the fact that I love Somerset. I love the diversity that it, it brings forth. Um, it's been a great place to be, and I enjoy being a part of this community. And I was a little stumped by all of this, because a couple of factors that you may not be aware of. Every summer, we service anywhere, not per week, but totally, over the total of the summer, we service 350 kids, families every summer. We won a few camps that were open throughout COVID. We lost money, but we still kept it open for first responders. We actually employ, uh, 70 to 100 kids, which the vast majority of them are from the Franklin and Somerset area. Um, and many of these kids, it's their first jobs, their first opportunities. I see them in their community, so their parents can drop them off, so they can have an opportunity to work. I love these kids, and many of them started out as campers, worked here during the high school and their college years. Um, in addition to that, many of them now are teachers, and they come back and they work, and they're very positive influences. Uh, and many of the young kids that are there, they, it's one of the things that they aspire to do, to be a counselor there, to work there. Even our college kids who are business majors, those kids come back and they do internships. I think we've done so many positive things. Um, as Ms. Menon addressed, up until 2019, um, there were no issues. We had occasional complaint about noise and things of that nature. I will not disclose some events that happened in 2019 between a particular zone board member, and I'm not going to go into he says, she said. I'll, I don't have a problem. I have all your email addresses, and we will bring that up when, if you, if you want to know. And then all of a sudden, she was asked to do a variance. There were never any issues with traffic, and at the end of the day, you know, you're not hurting the camp. You're hurting the kids who come to this camp. These kids will be destroyed. I have not sent out emails to tell them about the variance, because you would have had a room very easily. And I, I only invited the parents, because I wanted this to be done in a cordial manner. And I think it's important that you're aware of it, because it could be foreseen as a, as a problem. It's a very ethnically diverse, it's probably one of the most diverse camps you will ever see. And we have every nationality, very reflective of this community. And people, when they watch the video in the camp, if you go to our website, they're going to tell you that. That, this is a wonderful thing. It's, it's what the world is supposed to be, you know? And all of a sudden, we were asked to do this variance, and we did everything that these people asked us to do. Said you wanted more people in the parking lot. We did that. We spent 20, $30,000 to make any corrective measures they wanted to do. And when we had that hearing, we were completely dismissed. It didn't mean anything to them. But at the end of the day, who are we hurting here? I've never seen, I've been involved in camping for 40 years, and I don't just work in this town. We have camps in Piscataway. We have camps in New York City. We have camp, we have camps at Rutgers University. I've never seen a scenario like this, when the settler and vendetta that you would hurt children. And at the end of the day, that's who's being punished here, children. So many parents are going to have to tell their children that a place that they've been going to for years, they can't come to camp, because somebody wants to get even, and this shouldn't be done. And I implore you, do your homework and look at this, because this could get very messy for you, right? And I don't want that. That's why I haven't come here to address it, right? But I think this can be settled very easily. But at the end of the day, I just ask each and every one of you, don't think about Cedar Brook Day Camp. Think about those kids that come there. And the last point I just want to make, because I got 15 seconds. You also got to be aware of the fact that we spend over $500,000 with the local businesses in the area. And I didn't bring them, but they will also tell you that as well. And all of these things weren't taken into consideration. So thank you for your time, but please remember these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Kimberly Davison, 59 15th Street. Um, I am the parent of three children who attend Cedar Brook Day Camp. And my oldest, who turned 15 last October, was thoroughly excited, because this would have been her first summer to be a CIT. Um, my other two children, um, look forward to the camp. They look forward to picking who they're going to have in their groups. They look forward to knowing what the schedule is with the trips. And I know that, um, councilman, I don't want to say your name wrong, Ray, Raynon?
Oh, uh, Raynon, that's correct. And I'm not a councilman. I'm the, I'm the attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry, attorney. Said that this was not the forum, but I don't, I, I think it's the forum for an open discussion, um, because I am a working parent. My husband is a working parent. Um, and we are middle-class working parents, which means we need daycare or childcare services to be provided for our children during the summer, while they're out of school. And looking at any of the other camps that are in town, one is either completely financially out of reach for us, and the other does not provide the hours that we need to be covered. Um, I'm just asking for your support in terms of having the open discussion with whomever it needs to be to have a real good look at the application. Um, it would be heartbreaking for me to have to tell my children, um, that they won't be able to go to camp this summer. And on top of it being heartbreaking for them, it will be very difficult for my family and hundreds of other families from the township, um, to find care for their kids. If you have an alternative that you can provide and tell me where else I can go- If you have an alternative that you can provide and tell me where else I can go to get the same quality of programming, the same care, because at Cedar Brook, you're not just a camper. This is family, you know, these, I walk in and everybody who I may not even know, they know my kids, they know who I am. And it's not just my children. They know these 350 kids. Everyone knows everyone. They're all looking out for one another. And I think they do a great service for this community. And to just piggyback on what Mr. Smith said about the diversity of the camp. Being African-American, it is very important that my children are exposed to the world in which they, they live. We chose to move to Franklin when I was eight months pregnant with my son. He is now eight. And for, one of the reasons we chose to move here was because of the diversity. The town we lived in before was not as diverse and I didn't want that for them. And I don't want them to ever be in a place where not only do they not see their own images, but they don't see the other images of all the colors of the mosaic that make this country what it is. It's something that I'm proud to say, you know, Franklin does have because we have neighboring towns that can't say that. And I take pride in that. And I really think that, you know, losing this camp, whether it be for just the summer, will hurt not only the children who attend the camp, but all of the other organizations and companies that benefit from the camp running. So if that is something that you can lend your support to, we certainly don't think that you can overturn the zoning board's decision. But whoever needs to, I think you said it's a nine-seated board? And they're correct for the zoning board, nine?
It actually is a seven-seated board.
It's a seven?
It is seven. And five required to, it's seven. It, it, I just got it from the zoning officer via text message who's watching. It's a seven-member board with alternates.
Gotcha. And so the alternates take the place if one of those seven members are not in, gotcha. But if it can just be looked at again because you're, you're going to be harming a lot of families this summer and for them to have been able to pull us through COVID, my children attended during COVID and it was a wonderful situation for them. And you're going to just leave a really bad taste in a lot of families' mouths. So thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Wright, 4 Chandler Road, Somerset, New Jersey. Thank you for taking the opportunity for allowing us to speak this evening. I can't speak very intelligently about zoning. Not very educated where that's concerned. But what I can speak to you about is the economic benefits that this camp has provided, not only for the families that are here, but particularly for my family. When we moved to Franklin Township, my children were very young. And it became a place where we felt comfortable leaving our children because my husband and I work full-time. That was a benefit for us that was very valuable to us. As my children grew up in this camp, they became employed with the camp. And so there's another economic value there where this camp is providing employment to teenagers, to young people who otherwise would be doing other things. And we all know how teenagers can and will get into situations in trouble. And finally, at one point, I was unemployed and I had the opportunity to be a part of this camp as an employee. Not only did I get to see it from all three sides, all three angles, but the fact that this, what we keep hearing this phrase word, "community", is what Cedar Brook Day Camp is. It's all about community. Not only just for my children, but for children all throughout this community, all ages, all types of situations that they can come in. These young people come in not only for fun, but sometimes they come because they just need other support. And this camp has provided that. I don't know what caused us to be here after so many years that I've not had or not heard of any situations with Cedar Brook Day Camp. But it breaks my heart that we are here, that we have to be in this place. And for something that, again, I, I can't speak intelligently about it, but I do know that if camp is not allowed to run this year, if we are not allowed to have an outlet for these young people, then we would be doing this community a great disservice. This camp provides employment for our teenagers. It gives back in terms of reaching out to our vendors that are within the community. So we service and we give back in many different ways. And so we pray, we hope that you will reconsider. We hope that you just reconsider whatever the vote is. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening. My name is Donald Seeley. I live at 104 Stonehedge Court, right here in Somerset. I just want to say a couple of things. I could stand here and defend the camp. I could defend Nan Menon and the school. I've been with this school for 19 years since it was inception. I live in this town. I shop in this town. I sleep in this town. I work in this town. And all I want to do is come up here and tell you to listen to the tape of that town hall meeting. It was a disgrace. And if I can be blunt, as a white male, I was embarrassed by the behavior of a couple of members. And all we ask is that there might be an oversight committee to that meeting. Somebody listen to it. Tell us why we were denied. Because Galen Smith and the camp was willing to bend over in any direction they wanted. He was willing to spend money. He was willing to do whatever it took to get that camp running for 280 kids. It's a safe camp. It's a camp for this township. It's a, it's an inexpensive camp that keep people in this town can afford. Please, listen to the tape of that meeting and tell us why we were denied. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Atiya Lamte. I live at 174 Scobie Lane, right here in Somerset, around the corner. My children have been a part of Cedar Brook Day Camp since 2017. As a medical professional here in, living locally, it's, it has been a lifesaver for me to be able to drop my kids off and go to work. I work at multiple emergency rooms, Robert Wood Johnson, St. Peters, as well as JFK. And I wouldn't take my kids anywhere else. I could afford to, but it's just my choice. The care, the safety, the fun that my children have had over the, the last five years has just been memorable. They always look forward to going back to camp. One of my daughters, she actually moved up the ranks from a camper to an actual counselor. And this job has been so important to her upbringing. She's a senior in high school now. And I mean, this has definitely helped to, to, to help her to develop the leadership skills that she will need to take on with her, not just through college, but throughout her life. This is something that they look forward to and it is very, very important to them that this camp is, that it is, that it runs. Each one of these counselors that are here, the parents, I echo their sentiments that this, this camp and not allowing it to run this summer would definitely be quite devastating and would leave working parents like myself in a situation where, you know, we don't want to put our, I don't want to have to be in that situation to think about where I would have to send my kids, my daughter, where would she be employed this summer? It would just leave, it would just, it would leave a, a hole in our hearts. This camp, we have grown to be like family. Mr. Smith, as well as all of the administrators that are a part of Cedar Brook Day Camp, they really care about our kids and they make it so that before camp is even over, the kids are looking forward to the next summer. So I just really hope that this decision would be reconsidered. And I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Okay, good evening. Mackenzie Marshall, 78 Magenta Way. I'm here to speak on behalf of Cedar Brook Day Camp. I have been working there since I was around 13 or 14 and I am 20 years old, about to graduate college. I have worked from being a CIT to becoming an administrator and also getting an internship. It's truly a community. My sisters go there, my cousins go there and they've started since they were young and they're continuing. I'm not really understanding the whole issue with the camp because it's for the community. It gives back. It creates opportunities for people of all ages. And it's a big family, so don't take that away from us.
Hello, my name is Cheyenne, Cheyenne Daniel. I live at 1 JFK Boulevard. And I'm here to speak to you today about Cedar Brook Day Camp. I've worked with Galen Smith for almost 20 years and I've been with Ms. Nan since about 2017. And I just feel like it would be an affront to everything that Franklin and Somerset stands for to let this happen to a camp that serves so many in our community. I've been a Piscataway resident the majority of my life, but both of my uncles have lived here since my youth. So I'm very familiar with Franklin and Somerset and they've always been very diverse. The, the businesses that are around, some of the best businesses that you could ever frequent. And we frequent them as a company every year. Every year, we have children who are, who are going to the pizza spots and we're, we're buying ice at ShopRide and we're getting, we're getting things at Starbucks. We are servicing the community and we're servicing our, our parents. All, everybody in here has an experience with a working parent in which they cannot just bring their kid every, anywhere and do anything with them. As a parent, it makes, it makes your day go a little bit smoother. If you feel like, you know what, I don't have to worry about my kid. They're taken care of. And that's the service that we provide. In addition to that, we also are, are, are growing our next generation of, of councilmen, of mayors. And they should not have to see any of this go the way it's going just because two members of the community are against it. If you look up our record and our history, you will see that every year the health department gives us an A just based on the information that we have to pull from these parents to make sure that it's the safest place that we can drop our children. Every year. It doesn't make sense that two people in the community are being made to, are, are allowed to make a mockery of the, the zoning board just because they feel like they have an axe to grind. It's unfair and I don't think that, that's something, that, that's the optics that you want to give as a community. I urge you to reconsider everything that, that has gone on. And please, at least look at the two members and why they are doing what they're doing. If we can get an A recommendation since 2017 about the safety of our camp throughout COVID, how can two members of the community come and say, it's just not safe enough for us? I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isaiah. And while I might not have much information about the zoning board and what jurisdiction you guys may have over what they decide, I just would like to share my account as someone who attended the camp and as someone who now works at the camp. It was a great experience for me and I have many friends who also attended the camp. And it was a great experience for them too. And a lot of them have become counselors too. So like, we all have like grown up in the camp and I grew up in the camp and it's like a family, it's like a community. And I think it would be a great disservice to the community to not allow this camp to be running. And to speak on what people said about it giving back to the community and allowing businesses nearby to prosper. Like, a lot of the people who work there go to surrounding, you know, places for lunch. You know, we pick up lunch there and, and we, on breaks, like we go there and spend a lot of money in the community. And it's given me a lot of money personally that I could put back into the community, like as a person. And I think it's very, very beneficial and I think it helps a lot of people. Like, as a camper, it helped me because it was a great time. It was a great fun experience. And now as a counselor, it helps me because it's given me, it was my first job too. It's given me like information on how to be in a work environment and things of that nature. And I think it would be a great disservice to not allow this camp to run this summer.
Anyone else? Okay. No one else coming forward? I'll motion to close the public portion of the meeting, mayor.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. Motion is, public session is closed. Council comments and reports. Oh, Mr. Wright is, yes, Mr. Wright is there. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Mayor, I have no council report or comments. I know that was unusual for me, but yeah. Okay, yeah, so. Let me for this one.
Thank you. Councilwoman Udine?
I just have one thing to report today. So we had a public works meeting just prior to the council meeting. And the 2023 road paving schedule is in progress right now. We will report out the information as the fundings get approved. But you can follow our township website. It's under Public Works. If you go there, you should be able to see all the roads that are currently in progress of getting resurfaced. So it's under Public Works Street Resurfacing Project. And then if we scroll down, you'll see the current list of roads. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vasinella?
Okay, I got a few things. I'll try to be brief as possible. By the way, I know they all left, but I want to recognize the Girl Scouts who are here. It's great to see Girl Scouting is alive and well and booming in Franklin and hopefully perhaps their presence here will, will get more families and young women in our community interested in scouting. We have a fantastic Girl Scout camp within the borders of Franklin Township called Oak Springs. It's a fantastic asset. I've attended various events there over the years. And whether it's Scouting BSA, which includes boys and girls, or Girl Scouts of America, scouting, I think, is highly underrated and unfortunately highly misunderstood because the skills, the confidence, the self-reliance, self-sufficiency, the communication, all of the skills and experiences you share, really, with the wide array of activities that they do and the skills they work on, I don't know of any other organization that a child can prosper the way they can in a scouting organization. So just wanted to say that. And it was fantastic to see the accomplishments of the young women, girls that were here earlier. PW, Public Works, was mentioned. It's not as much money as we were hoping. We're working with the numbers. We're trying to still keep our road repaving plan up to where it won't, you know, get away from us. But we may have to cut back a little bit and we'll be presenting our recommendation to council soon as far as how much we believe should be spent. Real quick, I know there was some mention, I believe, that people left concerning the complaints or concerns about the marijuana facility that I don't know if it's officially going where it was mentioned. And I'm not going to address that facility, the possibility of that facility. But in general, I will say, I know, I believe it was Councilwoman Francois, myself, or perhaps others, were in support of there being the variety of the marijuana licenses allowed in Franklin. However, being the variety of the marijuana licenses allowed in Franklin. However, and I don't know if the Administration Committee's had a chance, I know there was some concern, at least myself, and I believe Councilwomen, perhaps others, that we need to take a hard look at our rights and our common goal of how many, locations, et cetera, which I believe we still have the right to amend or make stricter if we choose to as a council. So perhaps someone from the Administration Committee could update me as to if or when that will be reviewed. Because I, well, the votes, I think I can speak for everybody, but speaking for myself, I believe it should be legalized, but I believe, like alcohol should be highly regulated and very conscious, ongoing of how it rolls out in our town. So, and that's it, I'm sorry. Oh, one other thing we had discussed, and it's still in, I'm going to say, concept stage, and hopefully it'll be something more formal to present, we're exploring ways to possibly utilize the old schoolhouse you see here in a way that perhaps could celebrate the history of Franklin. I'll leave it at that. So hopefully we'll have something more formal to present to council and the public soon. I don't want to comment on the specifics of the case that was brought up tonight concerning the day camp and the zoning board. I know myself, and I think others will probably look into it more, to have a better understanding of everything said tonight, but I don't believe it would be proper for me to comment any further. But thank you, and even if we're not the body with the jurisdiction, you are always welcome to come here and voice your concerns and your opinions about any decision made by any board, but do understand that there's strict limitations on what we can say and how far we can delve into this as council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kimberly Francois?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to say, I'm appalled about what I heard here tonight, and it really upsets me. As somebody that has spent 15 years of my life dedicated to the youth of Franklin Township and working on opening up a youth center over 429 Lewis Street, these are the kind of programs that we need in this community. So I will definitely do some due diligence and find out. I want to do some investigation. I want to hear more about what happened there. So I will be following up. I gave my card to the owner, and I will definitely dig a little deeper and see what's going on there. Can't make any promises, but there needs to be some investigation. There needs to be some research done. I can't understand why this is happening in our community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Charles One Jaka?
Hi, Mayor. This is for Bob. I just want to let you know that your workers fixed the sign.
Oh, the street sign that you sent?
Yes, I just issued yesterday, this morning, and I saw the sign.
And they already fixed it? Good. That's what I like to hear, Council.
Yes, yes, you have a book there. And another thing, there was a pothole, and a black wall, a big black wall. Now, that one is fixed too. So your boys are working actually on my ward. They're doing good, John, my ward. So thank you. Mayor, that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Pitasnick?
I just want to wish everyone Happy Pi Day. Today is March 14th, and with it, sort of a reminder that we need more young women. It's Women's History Month, and we had the Girl Scouts here earlier entering into mathematics, so encourage your guidance counselors and teachers to understand that women can do math oftentimes better, as was referenced by Councilman Wright with the movie Hidden Figures that I think a lot of people have seen, you know, just on the heels of Black History Month. Black women who were great mathematicians and made our travel to space possible, and we want more of that in the future. So with that, I close my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Embarrasson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of things I want to report out, but before that, what I heard today was quite troubling. As much as we like to do something, I think we are restricted by our responsibilities and jurisdiction as council members. Although we appoint the zoning board members, we can't really influence that decision or undertake any other steps. However, I think one of the things that we can do is to have the members undergo some sort of a sensitivity training in dealing with the public. I think some of the comments that I heard today, as a member of a minority community, I feel insulted. I think, you know, we all have to respect our larger community, treat them all equally and with respect, and not feel like they are marginalized. I take offense to that, and I think the least that we should have our council and through the township manager institute some sort of a sensitivity training to the members of the board we appoint ultimately. Anyway, we will dig into what happened there. We will thank Councilwoman Francois for saying that. We will definitely look into it. We cannot promise anything, but we will certainly see what happened there. Anyway, beyond that, on the good side, good news is the Surridge Authority is being awarded $3.4 million today by the county from the art money for the infrastructure improvements. So that's a huge help to the Surridge Authority in terms of our capital projects for the year. So that's going to create some, it's going to free up some funds for both, for us to help the township as well as the Surridge Authority itself. There was a historic preservation meeting that I attended last week. There was a 13-year-old boy, Marcus McFellin, McFellin, who is doing some research on the Kingston area historical aspects of the town, and he's going to publish a 600-page book on the past, the historical nature and all the good things that happened there. I think the book is going to have about seven different areas. It's going to talk about homes and historical sites, the people, artifacts, accidents that happened there, and some uncovered secrets and public personalities. He's going to sell the book on Amazon, I believe, and all the proceeds are going to go to Kingston Historical Society. So I ask everyone to look for more details on that. When the book is published, we will certainly give some coverage to it from our side, and hopefully, they will get good support, buy that book, and help this young man out. He's 13 years old, eighth grader, lives in our town. We are proud of him. And of course, we heard about the Empty Bowls fundraising for this food bank, and many of you know that I support many of their fundraisers. Again, this year, I'm a sponsor of the 2D Franklin. That's going to be coming up on April 30th. Please support them with whatever you can. We want to fight the hunger in town, not only at the family level, even at the kids' level. I think that's something that we will be working on in the next few months. There's one more committee meeting that's coming up on the 22nd. HRC is going to have a meeting. I think our newspaper Franklin Reporter is going to present their missions and goals for the year. And not but the least, I think you have heard me speak about bringing higher education opportunities to Franklin. So we are getting close to that goal, working with the president of RVCC as well as the superintendent of our Board of Education to bring some programs in the fall, in a small way in the beginning, but I think that should hopefully grow into a larger program down the road. And the last but not the least, Happy St. Patty's Day on the 17th to those who celebrate. I already had my share of corned beef and the soda bread last weekend, so I wish a Happy St. Patty's Day. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For my comments, I am concerned about the camp, the things I heard about the camp. I've already had the attorney send me the TRC about the, that's part of the report that's given, so I can learn more about it. I will review the tape. And I'm concerned about the consequences, particularly the fact that we have working families, and somebody's going to be, have a difficulty with what they're, how they're going to keep their kids safe while they're at work, and that's troubling to me. I understand that isn't something the zoning board considers. That isn't supposed to be what they're considering, but they do, they do look at whether it's inherently good use. So I am troubled about that, and I will look at it. But as has been pointed out, and I'm not looking for sympathy for this, sometimes it's painful to be up here because there is limited things you can do. There is the law, and we are bound by the law. And people asked us to reconsider, and I take it in the spirit it was meant. We can't reconsider because we never considered. This was not our decision, and I'm not trying to shed responsibility. We picked the board, so we have ultimate responsibility. But I will investigate whether we have a role here, and then I will investigate what could be done. But it is, you have my ear. As far as, I just wanted to point out, ma'am, you talked about destroying the environment. First of all, I do not like that project at Schoolhouse in Mettler. I am with you on that. Again, there's the law. I will point out that in the last five years, we've preserved over 500 acres of property at the, the expense of about 24 million?
About that.
So the open space fund is used for that. We consider that important. But I know when it's happening around you, it's, it can seem very different. But I heard you. I think I'll end my comments there. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, and I don't have much to say tonight. What I would encourage all of the council members to do, because that one particular application involved a significant amount of work on the part of staff, is that you review all of the application materials that are still online under the zoning board link on the township website, and take in all of the information included in that zoning board application in addition to the hearing information. I'm familiar with this site. It's on my way to and from work every day, and I would just urge you to all look at all of the information here, not just what you've heard tonight, but take into account all of the information that's available regarding that one particular application. As far as the mayor's comments about open space, and also to remind everyone that I believe we're in the 38% or 39% range as far as permanently preserved land here in Franklin Township. So, and in that particular area, there is a significant amount of land that has been preserved by both the township, the state, and the county. So there's been a concerted effort for many years to preserve that land. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There's no council discussion items. Approval of the minutes. And by the way, if you want to follow along, the agenda is up there with all the ordinances we'll be discussing. Item number 10, approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to Township Council for their approval. Work session, regular meeting, February 14th, and work session, regular meeting, February 28th, both of 2023. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
移動第二
延伸女士
護士
是的
理事長理事長是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長
昨天我们讨论了，在我们的预算会议上，改善H V A C控制在大楼里 和现在
你问为什么？
对，开始火在这里
有
2月14日，2023年，我向 township council 提供支付，有沒有 motion on the warrants?
移動
第二
延伸 有沒有討論？有誰想 pulling an item? 女士
護士是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長
12号，2023年， Hamilton Street Special Improvement District，我向 township council 提供 合同，23-078， calendar year 2023， Hamilton Street CID budget，和公共会议日期的11月11日 2023。有沒有 motion on this item?
移動
第二延伸 有沒有討論？ 女士
護士是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長
一项是修改 township of Franklin， county of Somerset， state of New Jersey， 章头46， personnel policies， section 46-11， employment benefits， section F， holidays， 认证，有沒有 motion to open to the public?
移動第二
延伸 延伸，所有赞成的说开，反对说不， motion 是通过，我们只开放给公众 这个项目
看没有人前进， mayor，有沒有 motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance?
第二
延伸，所有赞成的说关闭会议，说同意
同意
否见， motion 是通过，公共会议是关闭，有沒有 motion to adopt?
移動第二
延伸，有沒有討論？ 这是一个 motion to conform with the state and allow for vacation day of Juneteenth. 女士
護士是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長是的理事長理事長是的理事長
4397-23，一项是修改 township of Franklin， county of Somerset， state of New Jersey， 更具体，章头185， filming， section 185-5， filming in residential zones， and 185-9， 复制 permits inspections，是提供给公众，对于公共会议和 is presented to the public for, for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Meaning is open to the public on this item only. It is to allow filming on weekends and to also inform, I believe it's the county, about the permits we're giving.
Seeing no one coming forward, may I motion to close a public portion of the hearing on this ordinance?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do I have a motion on the, a motion to adopt?
Seconded.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second. They're moved.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Take two.
Any discussion on the item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4398-23, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 390, Wreckers, Section 390-9, Towing Rates, Storage Charges and Service Rates, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of opening to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only. And it's pretty much as stated, it's changing the towing rates because we're out of line with other places, other towns and fewer towing facilities are responding to our calls for towing.
No one's, seeing no one coming forward, a motion to close a public portion of the hearing on this ordinance?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do I have a motion to adopt?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4399-23, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 180, Fees, Article 2, Police Department Fees, Section 180-5, Fees enumerated in Article 10, Senior Community Center Rental Fees, Section 180-21, Rental Fees for Rooms and Kitchens at Senior Center and Community Center, is presented for hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. So this ordinance is kind of in conjunction with the following ordinance. Removing fees from one ordinance to the other and we are, between the two of them, we are eliminating the, the requirement to get insurance if you are having a gathering where you're not inviting the outside public or you're not using the sports facilities.
Yeah, seeing no one coming forward, Mayor. A motion to close a public portion of the hearing on this ordinance?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is, opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do I have a move, a motion to adopt?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 440, 4423, ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 260, Parks and Recreation, Article 3, Exclusive Use Permits for Park Facilities, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Just for the viewing public who can't see the audience, the Franklin Reporter is the only member of the public that is here. So do we have a motion to close to the public?
Motion to close.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of closing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're closed to the public. Do we have a motion to adopt?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4401-23, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 112, Land Development, Article 21, Right to Farm, to allow for the review of special occasion events on preserved commercial farms and the establish, and establish the, and the establishment of criteria for said review. Is presented to public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. There's no one out in the public. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close a public portion of the hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is an ordinance, the state has granted preserved farmland to have events 26 times a year. I don't agree with the statute, but we have no choice in that. This ordinance allows us to have some control and make sure these things are done safely and coherently. Any other comments or discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Ordinance 4402-23, an ordinance accepting public sidewalk easement from JWH Real Estate Holdings Corporation for premises known as Block 514.04, Lot 1.01, also known as 1100 Randolph Road, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
Motion to open to the public.
Second.
Moved and seconded. There's no one in the public. Do we have a motion to close?
Motion to close a public portion of the hearing.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Do we have a motion, a public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Houdin.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Yes.
Okay, now as ordinance, we're going to ordinances on first reading and the first ordinance is ordinance 44-03, I'm sorry, ordinance 4403-23, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 384, Water. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with the law and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, March 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. Do I have a motion to introduce?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. So in financial oversight, our head of DPW and Water came to us and we actually knew about this issue for a couple of years. The, basically the water charges are not keeping up with the cost of water. The last time we increased the water rates was in 2013 and 2012 and the last time before that was in 2003. The amount that we pay for water has increased 19% since we, since we last increased the amount that we charge for water. This is not sustainable and New Brunswick is going to increase their water this coming year 3.5%. So the Public Works Director.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just, and the bigger one though is New Jersey American Water also increased their rates 3.5% and they're the even larger supplier of water.
Okay. So the, the man in charge of our water utility came to us and asked for us to increase the rate that we charge because it's not just the water we have to pay for, we have to maintain the system. He asked for an increase of 25%. So you were paying 56, or .566 cents per gallon. He wanted that to go to, well, 25% more. I don't have that number because we're, we did, we said no to that. He also thinks we should do what many other municipalities are doing and that would be asked, adding another charge called the DISC rate, which we, he would want to charge at .1 cents a gallon. That charge is strictly goes into capital. So we would have one charge that could be used for capital and the buying of water and operating expenses and the DISC charge, which is a .1 cent per gallon, would be.
Actually, it's not .1. I hate to correct you, Mr. Mayor, but that's a big number beyond what it actually is. .1 cent per, .1 cent per hundred gallons, not point per gallon.
Oh, okay.
.1 cent per gallon on a $10,000 minimum would be $1,000.
Right.
It's much less than that. It's $10 per 10,000 gallons.
Thank you. So with those, so the Financial Oversight Committee met and discussed it and we thought that was too much of a jump all at once. So what the Financial Oversight Committee has decided is, or is recommending to the full council, is that rather than increase the cost of water by 25%, we'd be increasing it by 15% and add the DISC charge and see where that gets us and consider it again next year. And I want to be perfectly straightforward, we may have to increase again next year, but our hope, well, first of all, we want to ease this in slowly and our hope is that maybe we won't have to increase it again, but I can't, certainly can't promise that. We, as I mentioned, we knew about this for the last two years, but it just wasn't in our hearts to increase the costs that people had at the time of COVID. It's never a good time to increase costs and we have inflation now, so it's also a tough time, but we have to keep our water utility solvent, no pun intended. So again, the Financial Oversight Committee is recommending a 15% increase in the, the DISC charge to, so the median household now residential pays about $300 a year, $76 roughly a quarter. The, this would add roughly $100 a year to the water bill for the median household. Think that's the, basically the gist of it.
And just the one other thing about the, the DISC charge, that the charge for capital improvements is that that is not based on a minimum billing. That is billed, that's billed on actual usage. So if a person gets a minimum bill of 10,000 gallons per quarter, but only uses 4,000 gallons, that fee is assessed on the $4,000, not the 10,000 gallons. That's the one thing that is on actual usage, not a minimum billing. So if someone is a single person and uses very little water, their, their capital, you know, their investment charge, which is what this is, it's a, it's a capital investment charge, would be much less than what it would be if it was based on a 10,000 gallon minimum, which it's not.
Eventually, we want to get to the situation where the price of water, not the DISC charge, but the price of water is automatically linked to the price that we pay so that we don't get these sudden jumps. So when we're charged more, then we will have to unfortunately pass that on to the, to the users. That's an explanation of what the Financial Oversight Committee has suggested. Do we have any other comments?
I have a technical question, Mayor.
Sure.
I was listening to the manager. Is it legal for us to not have, and I say this simply not debating the increases, just as an effort to encourage water conservation and minimal usage, is it legal for us to not have the DISC charge for people who keep their water use under that minimum as an encouragement to keep as little water usage as possible? And then the DISC to be applied to, you know, to everyone else, just to encourage water conservation?
I think that the DISC charge does encourage water conservation and I think though that it not, I'm, I'm not going to speak to the legality of it. Usually you ask the man, a couple of seats down from me, legal questions, but I will speak to the practical part of this. Every single user has an investment in the system. So whether I use 1,000 gallons or 100,000 gallons, my water is still going through the pipes and the, the department employees are still, are still doing their job. I think that this is a way to recognize that those who use little pay less and those who pay more pay more, but it's still, I don't think that, and, and, so I speak my old school way of exoneration. It's not exonerating them. It's, it's, we don't allow for those who use little to have to pay nothing, they just pay little because everyone who is a rate payer in the system has an investment in the system.
And there may, there may be a shorter answer to that. With regards to investment, this is a, a distribution investment charge, so it's paying for the infrastructure. And the problem is, is that whether you use five gallons or 500 gallons a month, the system still has to exist to give you the ability to use those either ones. So in order for a, an investment charge, which is an infrastructure charge, not to be arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable. be arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable, everybody who uses the system should pay based upon.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, I was just, just.
I think that's the, I think that's the answer.
And actually, didn't mean to make it into a long question, I was going to say, I could have done it, thank you.
Actually, the thing that would most encourage water conservation would be to not have the ten thousand gallon minimum, but start charging at low, charge per gallon, per gallon, so if you only use ten gallons, you're only charged for ten gallons. Problem is, when I worked through that, it was just, I did the math on it, and it was just unworkable, so we're, we're not going to change the ten thousand minimum.
That's fine, thank you.
We're not recommending it.
I know you guys put a lot of work into it, thank you.
Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance number forty-four dash zero four, I'm sorry, forty-four oh four dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending the properties contained in the Hamilton Street Business Community Special Improvement District as created by ordinance number three five four zero, entitled, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State of New Jersey, creating a special improvement district for the Township of Franklin, Hamilton Street Business Community, adopted on April twenty-six, two thousand and five. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at seven P M. This is changing one lot on, in the special improvement district. Kind of cutting it in half, part of it will be in special improvement district, and part of it won't be. Do we have a motion on the item?
They're moved.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Ordinance forty-four zero five dash twenty-three, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State of New Jersey, authorizing the acceptance of conservation agreement from A A C T F R. Property LLC to the Township of Franklin for premises known as block five seventeen point zero one, lot eight point zero six, also known as four oh one Cotton Tail Lane. The foregoing ordinance is presented to the Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting and publication in accordance with law, and public hearing and final adoption at the meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, March fourteenth, at seven P M. in the council chambers.
Should be March twenty-eighth.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Because otherwise, it would have had to be.
It is being today.
It would be two hours ago.
Motion to introduce.
Yeah, the same, that was same, that was true of the last one, too.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
So, just to be sure, ordinance forty-four zero four dash twenty-three, the Hamilton Street Business Community one, that's also on March twenty-eighth. I'm sure I read March fourteenth, because that's what it says here.
The, the published agenda, however, says April.
So, council was up late doing the budget last night. So, okay, so just, Mayor, we're sure the attorney doesn't want us to re-note?
The public hearings are on March twenty.
Yeah, the minutes should reflect that the ordinance is adopted, that introduced tonight, all three of them, forty-four oh three, forty-four oh four, and forty-four oh five, will all have a public hearing on.
March twenty-eighth.
Okay, we're covered.
We do not need to re-note.
Because we could, we could start at the pledge of allegiance again. All right, consent agenda time. Items A through I?
L.
L. Says A through one here. A through L, as listed in the consent agenda, portion of the meeting are presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
They're moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded, any discussion, anyone would like to pull an item? Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Batasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
We have no resolutions to be voted on separately, all business boards, committees, commissions, vacancies, does anyone have anyone to nominate? So, I have one for open space, Stephanie Spruig. The, I'd like to fill Nova Batten's unexpired term. Are there any other nominations for that position? Can do it by acclamation, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Congratulations, Ms. Spruig.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before, and I missed it, and I apologize for it.
You didn't have a public comment, so you, you're, you're open, you can do whatever you want here.
I'm sorry. Resolution.
He wants the last resolution. We've been sitting down here at the end wondering when you were going to catch it.
Well, you know, I had to get something in there. Resolution twenty-three zero eight-two, in support of a preservation of the open space area on the P N C. Bank site located at six seven five Franklin Boulevard. And the reason why I was looking for that is that that's the last piece of open space in that area. It's a big piece of land, and with the purchase of that, it would be, it would be great for the, for the kids over there. There's nothing there but grass, we play on it anyway, picnics, football, you know, you name it, that's what we do over there. So, I'm glad we passed this resolution, send this on out to let the P N C. know that we are interested in this piece of property for the residents in that particular area put up by R P M. So, definitely, Mr. Township Manager, you know, you rock that letter out, and we'd be Thank you very much, thank, thank you very, very much.
But don't tell P N C. that we really want it. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Be well, Franklin.
Now, we have heat.